Okay.
Yes.
Hey Bill, who do we, who do we have coming?
Uh, I do.
Aaron's not coming and Dan's not here probably. Okay. Okay.
How are you?
Good.
Sarah was supposed to be here.
Okay.
Um, so I haven't started it yet, let's see.
Vote in one absence or do we wait?
I need to share my screen.
Um.
Share my webcam.
It should just mimic one of your screens.
Okay, I was thinking we would, just 'cause I thought, 'cause people kept saying, "I'm not gonna be here, I'm outta town." Somebody's coming.
Well, we've got a quorum with just the four of us without Salty, so.
Okay.
Kenny's coming.
Packets.
So we should be, so we should be good.
Yeah, and I think it's good for the first meeting not to have the new. Let them get their teeth right.
Yeah, yeah.
Teeth right? No, let them get their.
Be wet.
Be wet.
Something with your teeth, right?
Something. What is it?
I wanna see an early commitment and a questioning attitude right outta the gate.
Be careful what you ask for with this one.
Yeah, right?
Objection. We have, it's just been a while.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Sarah.
Brian.
Nice to meet you, Brian.
Glad to meet you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi. You know, you know everyone from the interview?
I mean, sort of, it was on video.
You don't, you didn't meet Brian.
I'm Francie.
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 Giff.
Giff?
Yeah.
Salty.
Hey. Nice to meet you guys, Sarah.
Kinda fun being on this side with you guys.
That's why we have these.
Kinda fun being on this side with you guys.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're friendly. We're just, yeah, we, we do serious business, but we do it in a friendly, congenial way.
Except for that one time you called that guy an idiot, but he deserves.
Moving and shaking, that guy.
I don't remember.
Check out the minutes.
Find it.
I was so proud of you.
Was that the last time we did something illegitimate?
I don't think I ever would've said that.
Yeah, you, maybe you clearly implied it. Like, there were, you wasn't reading between the lines.
I wonder who that was, I don't even remember.
It was that one time that that guy didn't, didn't understand the policy and he built it wrong and you guys were making him go back and fix it.
No, no, you're in charge.
Like, well, I'm the developer, I don't know.
Oh.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do.
And I was just back there laughing.
Did you ever hear back from Kenny?
Right, I do remember that.
Well, he wasn't.
Did you end up, you didn't end up sending?
How long have you been in town, Sarah?
I thought we were.
Kenny?
Yeah, he thought you were.
So that's, yeah.
I have my scribble. Uh, still fairly new, I'm Denver.
Probably.
Yeah. We had, we spent a lot of time up here throughout the years and then finally made the.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we had an apartment land over in kind of a two rivers area for a while and then finally built it and. settling in now. Yeah, what about you?
About six years.
Nice.
We live on 832.
Cool.
Before that, we lived on.
Open PowerPoint.
Oh. Nice. Front range shop, yeah. Yeah, we were on the front range for ten plus years.
I don't have this saved as a PDF.
I'm originally from the East Coast.
Where?
Uh, Baltimore.
Our webinar. Shooting over there.
For you? Yeah.
Yeah, we're having.
Lived in Chicago for a while, my husband's.
Challenge, getting the PowerPoint up.
And, uh, we're never gonna leave. Turns out it's much better quality of life.
If you wanna give me the thumb drive, I can go and save it as a PDF and send it to you.
Don't send it to me, 'cause I can't get email on this thing.
Yeah, just save the PDF back on that flash drive, I think.
It's in the packet file, it's just, I thought I had saved them both.
I wish I could've gotten like a better intro to everybody.
Could I have you run and do this, actually?
Throw you in.
We're not able to open up PowerPoint, so could you take the PowerPoint presentation and put it in a PDF?
Read the code.
Yes.
Ask a lot of questions.
Also, should not be a problem. Yeah.
Gosh, we're just now approving recommendations from the Montessori school. It's been a while, huh?
Something you just left.
Oh, we've got three meetings, I see, approval of minutes, right, approval of minutes. This was the twenty-sixth of August?
Oh, I do have them both, okay.
Really?
Very good.
Guess so, huh?
So Brian was saying, like, really?
Really? I mean, it just doesn't seem like that, bro. I guess I've missed you guys.
Better get a life. A life.
You were, I don't even know that you were here.
I haven't been for a while.
But you were here at this meeting.
Probably gotta trade me in for somebody new, 'cause I was gone too many times.
Three in a year?
Or other reasons.
Right?
Excuse that. When there were, excuse to happen.
All right, well, we can start.
We're, we're gonna have a PowerPoint transferred to a PDF, because for some reason it's not opening up PowerPoint on this computer. So, uh, should be just a couple moments, but maybe in the interim, we can do some introductions, since we got a couple of new folks here on planning commission.
Absolutely.
So, why don't we start down at the end with Francie and then go, go this way.
I'm Francie Bomer.
Giff Crebel.
Salty Riggs.
New member, Greg Filet, Chair.
Ryan Colby.
Hi, everybody, Sarah Walsh, and I am a new alternate on the commission, it's my first meeting, so happy to be here.
Me too.
Big welcome to Salty and Sarah, thank you very much for, uh, jumping aboard. Um, we'll, uh, obviously do, um, some updates at the, at the end and everything else, I'm really just kinda wasting time at the moment until.
Just keep talking.
Till the thumb drive comes back.
Some updates now.
Yeah. Uh, we, we could, yeah, we could get a couple of things out of the way briefly anyways, um.
Need to be starting meeting, or?
Um, sure, yeah, let's start it, it's okay if.
The broadcast is now starting, all attendees are in listen-only mode.
If we're just waiting on PDF, but everybody's online, do we have anybody, do we have any commissioners online, I thought?
We do have Ken Vignali.
We don't see Dan on there, right, at the moment, so what you see is what you get, I did get a, a, uh, text message from Kenny, and he will be here in about fifteen minutes, but, um, we'll. If he jumps aboard, we'll have him, uh, come up prior to the second item.
Okay.
And hopefully we have this PDF here in just a moment. Um, yeah, quick updates, I guess, on.
Wanna do a roll call first, get.
Yes.
Call, call to order?
Yeah, let's get that.
As, as. Yep. Um, that's why, 'cause this is, is this the first one for Board of Adjustments, anyway, let's, uh, call the meeting to order and do a roll call.
Okay, uh, meeting to order, six oh six, uh, Filet.
Here.
Bomer.
Here.
Crebel.
Here.
Uh, Derwingson is absent, uh, Bush not online at the, at the moment. Uh, Layton will be here shortly. Uh, Riggs.
Here.
Walsh.
Here.
Almquist here, Hoisson.
Here.
Uh, Dunleavy is here, and she's walking in the door right now. Uh, Hodges is not here. Armstrong. Here? Okay. Sounds like some challenges. Are you able to do it without the presentation if necessary? Eee, yes.
We got it, we got it, hang on one second.
All right, do we want, is, do we wanna approve these minutes, so are, I guess, uh, are these minutes that we're looking at for planning commission or board of adjustments? 'Cause we essentially just ordered, we opened as board of adjustments, correct?
Uh, these are for the regular meeting minutes of August twenty-sixth.
So do we wanna approve those when we, on the next item?
Yeah, let's do it on the next item.
Okay.
Yep. Um. S- let's see, yeah, let's just continue going through it, I guess, and then we'll jump back to that.
Um, we can, you wanna tick off unscheduled citizens, is there anybody here, is there anybody online, anybody here to speak to anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Okay? Any amendments to the agenda?
Um, only that we will be opening as the board of adjustment, then closing that, and then opening back up it, uh, as planning commission.
Planning commission.
Um, since this body serves as the board of adjustments as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you wanna hit up, are we still working on, I assume, our presentation?
Almost there.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, um, would you, would you like a motion on the, uh, approval of the past minutes?
We're gonna, we're gonna do those when we open as planning.
Oh, I see, okay.
Board of adjustments, so, and those are for regular.
All right.
So.
Got it.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I steal your packet?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. All right. So the, uh, you gotta start up then, before we get this, okay. All right, so we can jump into the first item, um.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for. Variance at three eleven Grant Street.
Okay.
Take it away.
Here we go. So, three eleven Grant Street, this is a request to receive a variance from the minimum front setback of thirty feet in the R-one, single-family residential district. The applicant is requesting a sixteen-foot, four-inch setback for an eyebrow roof on existing non-conforming structure. And I believe, maybe Brian and or Kathy are here, looks like Brian McDonald is here. Um, so the location, uh, right across from the golf course, um, at the corner of Grant Street and Chavino Ave. Um, as I said, their property has an existing nonconformity, the building is actually existing within the setback itself. Um, so technically this variance is, um, expanding that nonconformity or changing it, hence the need for this meeting. Um, the degree of the nonconformity is, as the staff sees it, the minimum necessary to accomplish what they're trying to do. Uh, they are doing a large remodel of the home and adding, uh, some square footage, that square footage, if we had the image, which I believe is the next slide down. Is. So, people listening can still hear me, this is the proposed addition that they're doing, and this is the eyebrow roof location. So if you see on this image down here, if you wanna scroll over. This is the actual nonconformity that's being created with this variance, so that's the new addition to the house, and this is what's being sought after. Is that would be encroaching further into the setback. And so. Special circumstances, so for any variance, four requirements have to be met, um, as part of the process. First requirement is special circumstances exist such that strict application of the standard adopted in this chapter would result in undue hardship or practical difficulties for the owner of the property. Uh, they include but are not limited to exceptional or peculiar limitations to the dimension, shape, or topography of the property, such as slope, standing or moving water, wetlands, floodplain, rock features, narrowness, showiness, or regular shape of a lot. So their response was the property has an existing nonconforming structure which encroaches into the front yard setback, the structure encroaches approximately three feet, six inches, to three foot, eight inches into the setback. The exterior wall has a lot of sun exposure to the west, and the homeowners struggle with sun and UV through these windows. So the structure is a renovated garage and features a vaulted ceiling that is currently, uh, kitchen space. Uh, this portion of the structure will remain as an existing nonconforming structure, and will remain the kitchen and dining space, using a small eyebrow-style roof above a new window. The arrangement will provide the homeowners with protection from the sun and UV while also adding architectural interest to the existing renovated garage structure. So, block some sun, help out with UV and solar gain. Um, our comments on that were, um, special circumstance does exist for two reasons, first, um, it is an existing nonconforming structure, and the requested variance does not significantly change the nonconformity. And second is the request will significantly improve the building performance and help address the issue of sun exposure. Uh, number two, uh, wouldn't create a substantial detriment to the public good and would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of this chapter. So their response, uh, property is currently encroaching into the front yard setback, the entire length of the existing structure, including, uh, the renovated garage, front porch, and residence. Uh, the current homeowner bought the property, and with this proposed renovation are removing the encroaching front porch and existing residential structure. All the new construction will adhere to all zoning setbacks, and so we commented, uh, the impact created from this variance, um, would not have a substantial impact on public good and would not impair the intent of the comprehensive plan. Um. Oh, there we go. Looks like that's only two, I'm pretty sure there's four. So, number three, uh, requested variance would not result in a significantly adverse impacts to the natural environment or the surrounding properties, uh, and neighborhoods. So their response was, uh, the existing structure was built as a garage with a vaulted ceiling, with these, uh, with the renovation of the garage and living space, large windows with upper, uh, windows were added. These windows do not have roof eaves or cover, uh, to limit sun exposure. Um, it looks like an architect was hired to design the renovation and improve the existing home's condition and curb appeal. Uh, the proposed design updates, uh, and window arrangement of the existing structure but will suffer from sun exposure to the west. Uh, the eyebrows are a functional design element, uh, which will provide reprieve for the occupants, uh, and interest in the existing structure. Uh, the home is also adjacent to the golf course to the west, which provides, uh, low horizon as the sun sets. Um, and so we just agreed it wouldn't have, um, much of an impact on neighbors or the natural environment. And then number four, the grant of the request is the minimum variance necessary. Um, applicants respond, uh, this property is unique in that the slotted golf course is across the street to the west, without structures or large trees to block the sun. The windows facing this direction are subject to very high sun exposure and a low horizon line. This variance request is to attach eyebrow roofs to the existing nonconforming wall, which will help with the solar gain and UV exposure experienced. The grant, the granting of this variance is necessary to allow for a window arrangement that is complementary to the new design, while also providing the homeowner with comfort in this portion of the house. Um, and we agree this, uh, is the minimum, minimum variance, uh, required to achieve the solar performance necessary to address their concerns. Next slide. So, required actions by you all, uh, the board shall confirm that adequate notice was provided and the fee was paid. They paid, they paid the fee, and we did the proper fifteen-day noticing. Uh, the board shall conduct a public hearing, and the board shall make findings that points, numbers one through four, to the bid section, were all met by the applicant. Next slide. And so, the recommended findings by the staff is that, uh, variance is in conformance with section sixteen, four, one eighty, uh, E. Uh, required showing because special circumstances exist, the variance will not create a substantial detriment, uh, the variance will not result in significantly adverse impacts, and granting of this request is the minimum variance necessary, and is in keeping with the general purposes of the code. So we recommend approval of this, and the recommended motion is, I make a motion to approve the three eleven Grant Street variance request as it meets all the review standards for a zoning variance. And I believe that's it.
Thanks, John, any questions for staff or for John?
I just had one question, uh, just to confirm my understanding that the, the new addition does meet the front setback requirement?
Yes.
Is just the window, you know, over the, over the window?
Thank you. Yep.
Any other questions at this time? All right, is the applicant here, or do you guys like to say anything? Have anything to add, or?
Sure.
Come on up.
I'll pop. Phil Gamash, uh, representing Sarah Whittington, Architectural Services, and, uh, yeah, really the main point that I wanna get across is all other zoning, um, aspects will be met with this, um, redesign. Uh, the portion of the home that we're keeping is the portion that is, um, nonconforming, and all we're doing, all we would like to do is add some windows onto, or some shade structures onto that wall plane, to protect the windows and give some reprieve in the summer. Um, I am no, by no means a solar, uh, expert here, but I did kind of do a few angles of the peak solar sun angle and the low winter angle, and, um, what I found is that somewhere between eighteen and thirty is gonna be our sweet spot. Um, the city offered us eighteen inches without a variance, but eighteen inches doesn't quite allow enough overhang to block the majority of that summer sun. Um, without, you know, and we can adjust the height of that eyebrow, but in order to meet aesthetics and function, um, we're probably gonna be right around twenty-four inches. Um, now with finishes and the angle of the house and construction, um, we're asking up to thirty, um, we don't think we're gonna be pushing that thirty, but we'll be, we could be twenty-six and twenty-six inches, so. Um, we'd like to get thirty inches just to keep it, um, keep us safe, but somewhere between that, give or take twenty-four inches is what we're gonna need to accomplish what we want. And that's fairly about it. Any questions?
I, I just have a question for you, um, so just to make sure I understand this drawing. I, I do understand that the garage was there and that that's the nonconformity. The eyebrow, uh, will increase the, the nonconformity by how much?
Um.
So, you, you, right now, you're at, at what front setback, without the eyebrow?
We are, uh, I think John said around sixteen and a half feet, we're about three and a half feet, that building was built three and a half feet into the setback.
Okay.
And so we, we would increase, um, about five and a half feet, um, but one thing to remember is that these eyebrow roofs are self-supported, they're not gonna have any structure to the ground, um, you're gonna be able to walk underneath them.
I understand, I just, I guess my question was really how much, since you're already in the setback, how much more are you asking for?
Two feet. Two feet? Two feet, I'm asking for two and a half at the most, but in practical sense, two feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Phil. All right, well, brings us to public input, is anybody here to speak to this?
Uh, we have one person online.
Okay.
Um. But I'm not sure. They haven't raised their hand, so they might be here for the next item.
Okay.
Please raise your hand if you, uh, would like to speak and you're online.
Mr. Millet, I guess.
Okay.
And be sure to unmute yourself if you are muted.
Okay. He's self-muted, he's self-muted, so I guess he's not speaking.
Seems like maybe, yeah. Okay.
Did he raise his hand though?
No.
Oh, he did not. Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion and move on to commissioner discussion.
Well, I think what they're asking for is pretty reasonable under the circumstances. I mean, I, I do think that there are, and just for the benefit of our new alternates, we've, we have a pretty strict variance process where all four of these points have to be met in order to approve a variance. The one that we've had trouble with discussions on over the years has specifically been that number one, special circumstances. But I do think that this particular building does have peculiar limitations and so, on that point, I would agree with special circumstances and the others sort of speak for themselves. So, I, I'm all for it.
All good. Motion?
Okay. Uh, let's find it here. Well, I know it's up there, but it's got to be on here somewhere. One thing I would like to say, so I have maybe a question, an additional question for staff. Can I ask you a question at this point?
Sure.
So, in approving this variance, do we, do we want to specifically state how much of a variance we're giving them? You know, that 30 inches or two feet or whatever they need, or is it just a blanket they can?
I think it says that in the recommendation, up to a 16 foot, four inch front setback, correct?
Yeah. So, that's, that's what the vote is on as far as adding additional criteria. I don't know if.
Well, I don't need to add anything if, if it's specified in there that that's what we're doing. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the 311 Grant Street variance request as it meets all the review standards for a zoning variance.
Second. All right, we have a motion in two seconds. To approve the variance at 311 Grant Street.
Bomer. Foley?
Yes.
Bomer?
Yes.
Krebel?
Yes.
Riggs, I'm sorry, hold up. Um, who else we have voting out there right now? Colby?
Colby.
I thought I said Colby, I'm sorry. Motion passes.
Great.
Excellent.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming on this cold night.
Really going to miss those arched windows.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, we will need a motion to adjourn the board of adjustments.
I so move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and call to order the planning commission meeting.
Would you like to go ahead and okay the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, do we want, do we need a roll call again?
Uh, yes, let's do the roll call and then we'll do the minutes.
Great.
Back to this. Foley?
Here.
Bomer?
Here.
Krebel?
Here.
Leighton?
Here.
Riggs?
Here.
Walsh?
Here.
Almquist here.
Poisant?
Here.
Don Levy?
Here.
Hodge is not here. Armstrong?
Here.
Colby, here.
Did I miss you? Oh, it's because you're not on here. That's why.
Yeah, you missed me on both of them.
I'm sorry.
He's been gone so long, his name has been erased.
Goodness.
From the list.
What's your first name again? No, just kidding.
Chuck.
Chuck.
Yes.
Sorry, Brian. Okay. All right. Um, yeah. And so, for the minutes?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes from August 26, 2024.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the August 26, 2024 planning commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, all right.
Okay.
Any unscheduled citizens for planning commission? Anything that's not on the agenda? Okay. Any amendments to the agenda for planning commission?
Nope.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, the recommendation on a REACH minor subdivision, limited impact review.
Okay, that is me again. So, the request, an applicant, the request is for a limited impact review to subdivide the lot known as part block 206 Eddie Brothers addition into two lots. The current address for that residence is 310 URAV and that is zoned, a single-family residential R1. There's the property and there's the satellite view. And so, this is the proposed plat subdivision, so the larger square obviously is the existing lot. And Jen Ritchie is proposing to subdivide her lot into lots one and two as shown there. So, lot one is more of an L-shaped, well, they're both kind of L-shaped, kind of puzzled together, so it's the upper right of lot two and then extending over what the existing lot one was. And so, this is what we observed as staff, meets all of the zoning requirements for Fees in lieu, so any new minor subdivision requires a collection of a fee in lieu at an amount that are in place at the time of submission of building permits. So, whenever they go to build on said new lot, they would be subject to inclusionary housing fees. And those fees would be, you know, what is present at the time of building permit, so not necessarily what they are now, but whatever they are in the future when that gets submitted. Each lot will have separate connections to city water and sewer services. They'll be metered individually and XL Energy had commented on the need for a utility easement across lot two in this subdivision for a rerouting of the lines. And they stated the property owner such developer contractor may either obtain an easement for this or relocate the lines. Any easement is then established by PSCO, which is Public Utilities Commission of Colorado. So, all utility providers fall into that category and they get to determine when an easement is or isn't necessary. And then, the right-of-way agent for that particular company needs to be contacted. And so, looking at the subdivision review standards, I put little green check marks next to the ones that it has met and a little NA next to ones that don't apply. And the design standards, one is where that XL Energy comment is necessary or that they noted as far as utility easements are concerned. And so, agency review comments, finance department said they just need to pay system development fees at the time of the issuance of a building permit, so standard for anyone getting a building permit. Public Works Director stated they need to provide a five-foot sidewalk fee in lieu. So, typically, they would either construct the sidewalk or in this case, the director is recommending that they pay the fee in lieu for it. So, on new subdivisions, to pay into the fund that establishes those sidewalks, typically the city likes to build those themselves and according to their construction schedule and plan for uniformity. So, that's why there is an option to build it, but David usually prefers to have the fee in lieu instead. XL Energy, like I said before, establishment of the utility easement or rerouting of the lines likely would relocate the line. Just how the lot is laid out and where the building envelope would, would go would likely facilitate that. And then, slotted public schools, no response was given by them. So, required action by you all. You'll confirm that adequate notice was provided and the fee was paid. You'll conduct the public hearing and then you'll make findings regarding the proposed use in order to ensure that the use consistent with the comprehensive plan conforms to land use code and is appropriate to its location and compatible with neighboring uses, is served by adequate public facilities and does not cause undue traffic congestion or significant deterioration of the environment. And so, our recommendation, consistent with, you know, and requiring the needs be met for public utility providers, so XL Energy. So, what's that? Yeah. Fair contribution to public school sites. As amended, they have to pay into public school siting fee like any new residential unit does. And then, they're also subject to inclusionary housing requirements and we spoke about the sidewalks and water and sewer system development fees are due at the time of building permit. And a final plat shall be submitted for review and approval prior to recording. So, we agree that it meets the standards and we do recommend approval. And so, the recommended motion for this by you would be, I make a motion to approve the REACH minor subdivision as it meets the review standards for subdivision and subject to the conditions recommended by staff. Any questions?
I just have one curiosity really.
Sure.
I understand the issue with XL. Am I reading this right that the, the property owners can choose the relocation or the easement?
So, it depends on what the future development of the lot is. So, if they're building a house through, through where the existing utility line is running, they have to reroute it. And when they reroute it, they have to create a utility easement so that it can be serviced in accordance with XL.
Right.
So, likely, so, yes and no. It's almost impossible, given this lot, to not have it rerouted.
I was saying, you know, it, knowing what I know about all the poles, living in downtown, the poles and all of that, if it were up to me, I would relocate them and put them somewhere that they're not in everybody's way, but, well, you know what I'm saying? It's like, you know, the lines and everything, not, not to have to give up the right for the easement running through the property. Anyway, I was just curious about that. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right.
Yeah, a question regarding the applicability of the inclusionary housing in parks and recs because my understanding that if it's less than five units, there is no fee, no fee and those requirements are null and void. So, could you help me out on that?
Yeah, the, the applicable inclusionary housing requirement applications are annexations, planned developments, minor and major subdivisions, so this falls under the minor, condominium plats of all sizes, duplex conversion subdivisions and multifamily rental projects of five or more. So, that's where the.
Oh, that's where the five or more comes in. Just because this is a, a limited impact review in a minor subdivision, that it invokes those standards?
Correct. And if you recall, the fee in lieu, we put in a, a new set of fees based off of kind of a proration of the number of new units for these smaller minor subdivisions.
Right.
So, when there's one.
I have a point of clarification. Wasn't, I thought I heard your question to be about the parks and open space fee.
Both.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, I'll finish with the inclusion housing. So, yeah, that, if there's a creation of one new unit, then it pays the lowest per square foot amount. And then, it goes up all the way to the full amount if there is a inclusion of five units or lots.
Right.
So, on the, the open space, do you want to speak to that, Catherine?
No, I just, I had heard open space and I heard you answering with inclusionary housing.
Yeah.
Okay.
But on, you know, back to the inclusionary housing, you know, from the applicant's point of view, if I, I would want to know what that fee is and is it reasonable because clearly they don't.
Don't say that.
Put it in a position to, to understand that. I mean, I just.
It is what it is.
So, to what degree do we know what that fee is? And it doesn't seem to be reasonable when you're subdividing a lot and only put in a single-family development.
So, two things. One, the applicant doesn't necessarily have to pay that. It's incumbent on whoever's building the new residence.
Okay.
And the fee is based on the square footage of that new residence. So, without knowing what size home they're building, we wouldn't be able to determine the fee. So, when a prospective buyer, and I won't speak to Jen Ritchie's plan for the property, I imagine she'll probably sell the property and whoever that new buyer is, they might choose to resize their home depending on that fee amount.
Right.
But it's the lowest amount, which I believe is $6.50 a square foot.
So, so just to clarify, the amount per square foot is set. It's just the actual number of square feet that is variable, Brian?
Well, and it's, it is set right now and because the wording is that it's assessed at the time of building permit, should that fee change, then the new fee would be what is applicable. Right? Because we, we update the fee in lieu at least yearly to keep up with the, the rising market prices and differential to affordable housing prices. And so, once that goes into effect, if a building permit comes in at that point, after that point, then the, the fee that they would be required to pay is whatever is on the books at that, at that point, at that moment.
I thought we said, I thought we agreed to set it at whatever it was when they applied. Did we discuss that at the meeting?
You did that specifically for a PD?
That's when they apply for a building permit is when it's set.
Oh, okay.
Right.
So, they'll be informed at that point what that fee is.
Yeah.
You know, okay. And we're just recommend noting that that's going to be a, a fee, a future fee to the developer of the property.
Correct.
Of course, they can always opt, that person can opt to build and de-restrict a unit to satisfy the requirement. When it's one unit, in this case, I would imagine that's unlikely.
Unlikely, of course, yeah.
But, an option.
And now, on the parks and recs, open space side?
Uh, yeah, and that, that's in any subdivision. The park and open space fee is also applicable and again, it is based off of whatever the fee is at the time of building permit.
Right.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions for staff?
Nope.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
They are not. They were not able to make it.
Okay. Then we'll go on to public input. Is anybody here, here to speak to this? Come on up.
My name is Jane Elmore and I live across the street from this house. We've lived here for 40 years and one of the reasons we love where we live is the whole feel of that neighborhood and just the beauty and the consistency of those houses on the mesa and how they all fit in together. I'm very concerned with somebody subdividing a lot across the street from me. We don't know who would buy the lot, who would build the house, what that house would look like. You know, if someone was going to build a cute, this is a beautiful piece of property. It's one of the most magnificent places. It's like a little estate with a very adobe house and the landscaping, everything about it is beautiful. It's classic. It's really a masterpiece of that neighborhood. And now, if somebody's going to come in and buy a piece of property and they get to choose what they're going to build, if it was a cute little casita that fit in with the beautiful adobe house that's there, okay, I can understand that. But from what I'm seeing around town, the new little houses that people are building are not cute little casinos. They're tall, often they're ugly, two-story, you know, they don't fit into the neighborhood that we're talking about. And the fact that Jen is simply going to sell this off and then she no longer has any say about what goes in there, really breaks my heart to see this committee approve something that could end up being just such an eyesore for that mesa community. And I don't know if you have any power to do anything about it. I certainly don't have any power to do anything about it. I went to Jen at one point and I said, are you at least going to keep the wall up? She has a wall against the road and it's, it's a nice wall. She said, oh, yes, I'll keep that up. But if she sells that property, I don't think she will have the ability to do that or the right to do that. So, I'm real concerned that this will change from a beautiful, beautiful masterpiece of a little tiny estate on the mesa to something that's just. of a little tiny estate on the Mesa to something that's just not the same. And so I'm coming just to express my personal regret and sorrow to see neighborhoods kind of dissolve like that. I don't know what you can do, I certainly don't know that there's anything I can do. But it breaks my heart to see a beaut, she bought that property and she was so excited about it and she loved it and she loves living in the, in the house. But then I understand she has financial concerns and so wants to raise money by selling part of that off. And that's just disappointing to me. Any questions?
No.
Is there, I, I do have a question. Do you, is there an HOA or any covenants applicable in the neighborhood?
No.
I don't think so. No, it's just a neighborhood. It's just a neighborhood, a nice old neighborhood. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, well, keep me in mind as you make your decisions. I, I just think it's tragic. Okay, thank you. I think there's one other person.
I'm also a neighbor. I haven't been to one of these meetings, I thought I was doing online, that's why.
You're welcome.
Could we get your name and address, please?
What's that?
Could we get your name and address?
My name is Ben Millett, M.I.L.L.E.T.T. And I live at three, two, six U-Ray, which is, if the plat was up, it's kind of, if her lot was there, I'm kind of directly behind where the garage would be in the L.
Sure.
There, so um, the first thing I'd like to say is as a neighbor and just in general, I'm, I pretty much believe in being live and let live. You know, I don't want to tell people what to do with their property or not. You know, I wouldn't want anyone to tell me what to do with it. So I, I do understand that and whatever her rights are, of course, I want her to have. But I do want a second, what um, Jane said, when I moved there, it's my total investment with my family. I have a family of four and we're all in in Salida and moving into this neighborhood. And we moved there because of exactly what Jen's, Jane said. It's a nice, small neighborhood and we were, you know, thrilled that we were moving in right next to what is one of the nicest houses in my opinion in Salida. And um, and even, it was recently listed and it was listed for, I think, one point six million dollars, which was kind of a little bit astonishing to me and a lot of people that I spoke to. And it was listed in it as, it was described as one of the iconic houses in Salida. You know, in, that was what, what uh, you know, the person who was selling it, what, what Jen said about the house. So, you know, she obviously cared about that house enough to say that and also cared about it enough to be putting it up for a price that was, you know, I don't know, forty percent more, that, I don't, I don't know the numbers, but obviously more than anything that I'd seen around there. So my two concerns are that, again, it's a shame that, you know, uh, that a house that's listed as an iconic house and that has that appeal for the neighborhood and it keeps the Mesa community uh, kind of, it's, it's right there on the park. You know, it is probably the nicest house in that neighborhood. And I am concerned that, you know, what it will do to the neighborhood, you know, in terms of just how it looks and everything, of course, you know, in terms of values, you know, because like I said, it's my entire investment for my family. And um, and so those are my concerns. And of course, like I said, I want everyone who's entitled to their rights to have their rights. But I do want to at least present my view like Jane did, that, you know, it would be a shame to see it split up and to see, you know, a two-story house or whatever is allowed to be put on this property. And I don't really see how it could not take away, if you see the house and the way it's laid out, it, it's hard for me to imagine. You know, I work in the trades, it's hard for me to imagine that it would, uh, it would not, it would really deteriorate from the neighborhood and also mostly from the property. So, that's my, that's just my opinion. I thought I'd come and share it since I live next door and I care about the neighborhood and the property.
Thanks for being here.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Anybody online?
I do have Mr., oh, Carrie. Carrie, would you like to speak to the commission?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Um, and I think I put it in the chat. Um, second, what everybody else has said. Um, I guess my concern as a neighbor adjacent to this lot would be, um, you know, and, and just to reiterate, you know, one of the appeals of this neighborhood um, and one of the reasons we probably paid more than fair market value at the time that we invested is because we were interested in, in a home, a place to raise children, open space, beautiful views. We're concerned as neighbors as to the aesthetic of the neighborhood, but also what it could possibly do to, you know, views, sunshine on old growth trees that we have. So I don't even really, I've never been involved in a process like this. I don't even know if these things can be factored in um, to decisions or, you know, if they're weighted at all. I know there are neighborhoods that take into consideration like historic homes. And so, yeah, I guess that's my question. As far as this as a process, I mean, do these things, should we even be here bringing up these concerns? Is that what this public hearing is about? Are these questions that can be factored in on, on deci, decisions or limitations of, of what can be built? Um, so I just have a lot of questions, I guess, about the process in general. And are we wasting our time even being here raising these concerns?
We have your address also, Carrie.
It's three, two, six U-Ray. It's the property that's adjacent to three, ten.
Do you want to address her question at all or?
Um, sure. So, I mean, to address everybody's concern, yes, you are being a part of the process, first of all, first and foremost, yes. And you're welcome to come and express your concerns, that's what this meeting is for. As far as this particular um, circumstance goes, everything really, this is kind of what we've been talking about for a long time. It is R1 and it's still, which is the largest lots. And this still conforms to that. You still have a R1 conforming lot in there, which allows for bigger setbacks, more space. So, I, I wouldn't say our hands are tied, but we are, look, we as a commission, and we've talked about this, this is the kind of infill we have been promoting and that we think is great. This is gonna be a little addition. There's not gonna be, you know, as far as what you can put in R1, it's not, you're not gonna see a fourplex go up on this. You know, so there, there are R1 regulations to this lot. And I think it could very well be a great addition to your neighborhood.
I'll just add um, as well, that when it comes to these sort of processes, a minor subdivision uh, does need to be looked at by this body via the standards of the land use code. So that's, that's why John went over um, all those different standards. And those are the uh, kind of the hallmarks by which a particular request needs to be approved or denied. Um, and um, that, that's what the, the commission does need to, to stick to. Um, but we absolutely encourage anybody's public input. We very much appreciate it. Sometimes those elements uh, that folks provide have to do specifically with the standards and sometimes are outside the bounds. But I think when in doubt, please do come and speak up.
Thanks, Bill.
Public hearing is closed?
Yeah, that would, that will close the public hearing and move to commissioner discussion.
Well, I, I would just like to say I totally sympathize with the neighbors, one hundred percent. We're all sort of in the process of going through, you know, what might go next door, what might lose a view, what might, and, and, you know, as long as something is meeting the standards of the code, you know, we don't really have design standards or limitations for height or, you know, mass. I will say though, to Sarah's point earlier, Sarah, right, point, that, you know, when neighbors really want to do something uh, to limit those things, then, you know, neighbors have some power to get together and create, uh, whether it's an HOA, or, I'm not a lawyer, so an HOA, you are, an HOA or a covenant or simply just an overlay, uh, which I know has been done in the city to um, to limit mass and scale in a neighborhood. So I would just send that out as a, as a beacon of hope for your future on the Mesa. But to reiterate what's been said, we don't have the authority to limit someone's rights as Mr. Millett pointed out. Uh, if they're, if they're within the boundaries of the setbacks and the code and the lot size and the, the dimensional standards and what is allowed in that zone, then, you know, we don't have the power or the ability to um, address those things. So, I just wanted to speak out in sympathy. I mean, you know, the city is changing and density, as our chairman said, is something that we're really, we've really wrestled with and that we're, that we promote. Because keeping um, keeping uh, density within the metropolitan area, within the municipal services area, as opposed to sprawl all over the county, is not necessarily a bad thing. But it's a real balancing act in how to do that and how to do it, you know, gracefully and, and in a way that, that protects the neighborhoods as much as possible. Yes.
Anybody else?
And just to clarify, I think, I think I understood what you were trying to say there, Francie, but I just want to clarify that there are dimensional standards um, across the city and um, that apply to this lot as well. So, for instance, um, any building in the city, well, any residential building in the city has a maximum height allowance of thirty-five feet and then all the setbacks that, that would apply to this.
Yeah, no, I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying that, you know, for example, the Sackets neighborhood has an overlay, which the neighbors put together, I don't know, fifteen years ago or something, that, in order to protect that particular neighborhood. And so, you know, as neighbors are concerned about things, you know, that, that, you know, we have whatever authority we have as a board, but, but individuals have um, power and authority to get together with each other and promote whatever they feel like is better for their neighborhood.
The only other comment I would make is, you know, I always find it interesting with the sidewalk situation. There's no sidewalks out there now, and now, is it the applicant who pays for the, the sidewalk? Not as part of the subdivision?
Yes. Yeah. And it's based off of the linear footage.
Sidewalks, but, you know, somebody's gotta go first and, you know.
Well, I think the money that.
That's why they, that's why they prefer.
They do the fee and lieu.
Yeah, right, exactly.
It's part of a greater program really, citywide, that will uh, assist with pedestrian connectivity.
Right.
And, you know, we, we try not to encourage folks to build just like the sidewalks to nowhere, which often need to get, get torn back up.
Right.
If uh, they're gonna come in and do the entire road, so.
That's right. And, and I just don't know whether we can be more specific and say fee or lieu.
Well, the director has said fee and, fee and lieu.
But I don't know whether we can include that as part of our.
Yeah, it's already in there.
It looked like it was an or.
Well, the, the director has suggested that. It's one of the recommendations.
Yeah, in the, in the motion, yeah, in the staff recommendations.
According to the code, the choice exists, but then it's deferred to the public works director who manages that. And his, you know, choice typically is fee and lieu.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, that, that's the direction we're going.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? Ready for a motion?
Sure.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the REACHU minor subdivision as it meets the review standards for a subdivision, subject to the conditions recommended by staff. And those conditions were just reviewed, so I won't repeat them.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the minor subdivision limited impact review with conditions as stated.
Fullay?
Yes.
Bomber?
Yes.
Crevel?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes.
All right.
Thank you all for being here and taking your time. Come back another time.
It's always fun.
We're here a couple times a month. All right. Thank you very much, Jane.
Updates? One second. We got updates and then we, and then we adjourn. We got, we got a couple things, we got, we got updates, new business. What's the difference between updates and new business?
That's what, that's what. That's your business. No, um, that's a good question in this particular.
Hey, can I, you know, can I actually ask a quick question on, um, so it said in there that the utility easements are dedicated to the city, but is it to the city or is it to the utility?
It depends on the, on the utility we're talking about, of course.
This was in the recommendation, utility easements are dedicated to the city of Salida for the benefit of the applicable u, utility providers for the installation, maintenance and replacement of electric, gas, television cable.
Yes, that should actually read the utility provider.
Yeah.
Yep. That might have been poached from another.
Right.
Another place that reference water and wastewater, so.
So that would just be a Scribner's.
We can, yeah, that's a Scribner's error, we can.
My bad.
So, uh, let's see. We are likely to have at least one, if not two, uh, joint work sessions with council in January. Still working on the exact date of that. It may be the sixth or the twenty-first. The twenty-first is a combined work session and regular meeting for council be, because of the holiday on the twentieth. That would be, that would start at five PM if it were at that date. It would be six PM if it was January sixth. So just a heads up on that, we'll send out more once we have um, scheduled that one.
Bill, what's the subject?
Uh, to be determined at this time. We have, we have some stuff, but I, I don't want to say it publicly at this, at this time, because we haven't.
So it'll be one or the other of those?
Uh, actually, it could be, I think it'll be at least one, could be two.
And, and our, so we have a work session then on the?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth? And a meeting on the twenty-seventh, regular meeting?
Yeah, and I think that um, we'll have to get back to you on that one. I, I know the twenty-seventh is likely to happen, not sure about the thirteenth at this moment. We'll, we'll give you a heads up as soon as we have that confirmed.
Okay.
Um, just another heads up, a long time ago, in a planning commission meeting far, far away, you all um, reviewed the Angel View PD and major subdivision.
Talking about what happened.
That is um, finally coming back to council. Uh, there were some tweaks, fairly minor tweaks, I think, overall, but a lot more specificity around um, some of the items, including the open space dedication development, so.
But we won't see that again.
No, no, the changes were very minor and really don't impact your recommendation.
Do you know when that'll happen, if we want to listen in?
First reading?
Seventeenth of December.
And the second reading would be?
January seventh.
Okay.
Just thought you might be interested in that one since it's.
Yeah, definitely, well, Jeff and I were just wondering what had happened to that, yeah.
Yeah. South Ark neighborhood, uh, just update on it. As you might be aware, an engineer was hired for uh, doing the design and um, finishing that out for the neighborhood. And uh, we just last week got um, all the like, very defined topo information back.
Are you, excuse me, Bill, are you talking about the design for the?
For the utility, yes, utilities.
Utilities, okay.
Um, because that's the first step in the whole thing is to, to put in water and wastewater out there. And so we got uh, topo information, they had flown drones and then had people down on, on the ground. And uh, it's kind of exciting to see it coming to life um, with real true topographic information, to overlay that master plan, there's gonna be a few tweaks um, you know, to, to match the topography. And then the next step is really to kind of do a sort of cost benefit analysis of the various infrastructure, backbone infrastructure lines, to see where the exact location of that will be and the depths that it'll need to be and, and everything along those lines. Of course, once they figure that out, that's when the, the real nervous part um, starts as far as what the cost estimates are gonna be. It was estimated at just a little over seven million dollars, but um, as many of you know, prices have gone up quite a bit recently. Construction is just not getting any cheaper, so we hope that it stays. we hope that it stays within the, or close to the estimate.
Do we have grants for that, is that incorrect?
We do have grants, yeah, we have-
About the seven million?
We have four million in grants.
Okay.
Um, and then the rest of it was supposed to be made up, uh, via the city's contribution, the county contribution, and CMC.
Okay.
Yep, so, we will see on that one. And then, uh, sort of last, but not least, the, uh, land use code. We are waiting with bated breath for a, uh, draft, uh, to come out this week from Clarion back to us, based off of a bunch of input that, uh, staff provided to Clarion over the last few months, and we hope to have a draft that we are going to be putting in front of the land use advisory committee, and we are meeting with that committee next week, next Wednesday. There's a couple of you on this board who will be a part of that, uh, to review, and we're gonna try to review it in a minimum of two parts. Um, so in other words, we'll probably end up sending one half of the land use code, um, to that group to review. It's, it's burly, obviously. It's a lot to try to get through, even in, you know, three-hour meeting. But that's our plan, is to do that at the, at this meeting next week, and then come back and have another meeting in January to, um, look at the other half. And then somewhere in that vicinity, we'll be releasing it to the public. And then soon thereafter, we'll be starting a public process to get the feedback, you know, probably starting with an open house that kind of lays everything out there and summarizes it for folks. So it's very exciting. This is four-plus years in the making, and it's, um, yeah, it's a big deal, and it's gonna, it's gonna take a while.
Didn't it start in twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen's when we got the grant, and they did, did the initial interviews with folks. Yeah, stakeholder interviews, so it's, it's been a while. Yeah, big deal.
We do have a tentative date for the first public open house. I don't know if you wanna-
Yeah, go for it.
It's January twenty-eighth, is what we're hoping to do for that.
Yeah, so barring any unforeseen circumstances, um, that's when we'll be bringing it out to the public. We may release it in a, a document form ahead of, ahead of time, so folks have an opportunity to review it. But then we'll actually go over it with folks publicly on that date.
And that would be like in the evening?
Yes.
At five o'clock, six o'clock?
Yeah, somewhere in that vicinity. We haven't, I don't think we nailed down the exact time, but it'll be right in there. And it'll probably be for a couple hours.
Yep.
And then, uh, Catherine has an announcement.
So this'll be my last planning commission meeting.
No!
So, um, I, my last day will be January third.
We're gonna miss her dearly.
Are you staying in Salida?
I am.
Good.
We'll see if we can reel her back in at some point, but, uh- Yeah, so, um, and I really wanna applaud Catherine for all the work that she has done on the land use code. You know, we've had a lot of meetings, we had a little bit of, a lot of changes with staffing, um, and folks being involved in it, and then over the last, really, six months of the year, we've been just really jamming on it, and Catherine has, has really lifted the heaviest part of this load, um, just making all the edits and, and doing all the communication back and forth with Clarion. So I really wanna express our gratitude.
Thanks for all your work, Catherine.
Thank you, Catherine.
Just when we got fully staffed.
You'll be missed, yeah.
Bill, will we put, will we fill Catherine's position?
Yeah, uh, that's, that's the intent. We hope to get something out there, um, posted fairly soon, and try to get somebody in there early next year. All right. There you go.
I'm not sure where we are in our unfinished business, new business.
I think it's like, uh, newest oldest business.
Funny business, funny business is next.
Funny business.
Yeah.
Uh, commissioner comments, any?
Oh, I wish everybody happy holidays.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here.
Nice to meet everybody.
Yeah, welcome to our two new additions. It's nice to have other, other gals on the panel. I'll say that out loud.
And, and just, just to clarify, for, especially for our alternates, uh, even when you're not voting, you are more than welcome to be a part of the discussion, ask the questions, throw in, you know, your, your thoughts on it, but, um, unless the chair names you as a voting member, you won't be voting on that item.
Thank you.
Since staff comments are already done?
Yep, all good.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Second in a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, have a great evening.
Thanks all.